Good evening, I am calling to order the August 12th, 2025 Fountain City Council Meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, roll call please.
Mayor Thompson.
Here.
Mayor Pochamric.
Here.
Councilmember Hinton.
Here.
Councilmember Geek.
Here.
Councilmember Estes. Councilmember Hersberg. Councilmember Duncan.
Present.
I have five members present and councilmembers Estes and Hersberg notified staff of their absence this evening.
All right, thank you. Do you have any cards?
I do have two cards, I'm sorry. Here they come.
All right, thank you. The first card I have tonight, for the public to be heard time, citizens may address the council on items that are not on the agenda, council may not be able to provide an immediate answer but will direct staff to follow up. Out of respect for the council and others in attendance, please limit your comments to five minutes or less. First card is from Mr. Bonner, Mr. Virgil Bonner, and he wanted to talk about flooding in Cumberland Green neighborhood. And so please come on down and state your name for the record and push the middle button there on the microphone and you have five minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Virgil Bonner. Okay. So yes, I come to you with an issue that I think that we've kind of seen but nobody really knows the details. If you guys remember about three years ago, there was a big flood in Cumberland Green, the fire department responded, Fountain PD came out with the MRAP, all that fun stuff, that was at my home. There's about four and a half feet of water at that intersection, it flooded my basement, I had eight and a half feet of water in my basement, came over the window well covers, filled the entire basin. What is not known is that that is a common thing for that intersection. These last couple storms over the last few months, there's been two feet of water or so. When the pond is full, the retention pond is full, that's when my home is very much at risk for flooding. I've not been able to secure flood insurance through FEMA because I'm not in a flood zone, I'm nowhere near a flood zone, they don't feel that is appropriate for funding or me to be on a policy for that. It's very nerve wracking that every storm I have to worry that my house is going to flood again. It took all of my savings, plus some, to replace the furnace, to replace the AC, to replace all my windows, everything that was in the basement. And I really would like that not to happen anymore, if that be possible. Doing some calculations, I have family that lives on Erml, and based off the area and how the water flows, there's about 52 million gallons of water. If we have a three inch storm within an hour, there's 52 million gallons of water that is flowing towards my house. There are five drains in that path to my house, that's it. Two of them, pretty much once a certain flow rate is hit, are useless because it goes past those, that's why we had the damage to Eagle Side, everything else in that storm because that just become, those are just blown right past by the water. With these storms and the pond being empty, it still seemed like a system constraint that it is just not big enough to take on that water. So it would build up to about two feet, two and a half feet, seemed like the system would burp its air out, drop down a little bit, and then it was coming back up. I feel if that storm had been longer, I would have another situation where I'd be dealing with another flood. Last year, it came up to about three and a half feet. Street supervisor was out there the next day, I did bring it up to him, that this is a constant problem, it's been a constant problem since I've lived there since 2017. I requested last year also, should be in record somewhere, for those drains to be checked, for the manhole covers, everything to be inspected in case there was a blockage or anything like that, and I even put in the notes that this is a constant problem of flooding in this area. I don't know what can be done, but I just want to bring it to everybody's attention because I feel very helpless right now. My son has very bad panic attacks, anxiety attacks, whatever you want to call them, not diagnosed or anything, but just, you know, he was nine in the first flood, and single dad, and he had to deal with me having my own little panics, trying to get things upstairs, have to deal with water rushing in, have to have the fire department come carry him, away from the home, me having to stay there, and that definitely had an effect on him, had an effect on me. And, yeah, I appreciate you guys' time. Do I step away, do you guys have questions?
You're fine, you're fine. I was going to ask Mr. Trainer, since he probably, we've had staff that have been in on this conversation in the past, it sounds like, maybe some history or what.
Could I get the name of the intersection? You probably said it, I missed it, and I was pulling up the maps just to air it.
No, I didn't say, so it's candlelight and trackage.
Candlelight and trackage.
So my house is the one that is on the north corner of that intersection.
Candlelight and trackage.
Thank you.
So Mr. Bonner, what I'd like to say, I'm going to give you my card, and it's the first time I've heard of it.
Okay.
I know our streets department is out there constantly when we have these big storms. One thing we've learned is, can't commit and guarantee that we can fix the whole system, but I'll connect you with our city engineer, so he can come out and meet with you and see if there's anything we can do to help you.
Okay.
Sadly, we're learning that these 100-year storms are almost happening every year now.
Yes, they are.
And we can't out-engineer Mother Nature, we see it on the news every day, but we'll get the city engineer with you and see if there's something we can do to help you.
Okay, I do appreciate that. I do feel that if the retention pond in Cumberland Green is empty, that does give me a better chance of not having to deal with the situation. It has been full for the last few days.
Sure.
You're getting fuller.
Yep.
But I don't know if that was because of my conversation with the street supervisor last year, because his opinion, hopefully he doesn't get in trouble, he felt that there needed to be another retention pond built in that field that's kind of towards the east. Because the one that's in that other, that new neighborhood, the Aspen Ranch, wherever that is, that does pretty good at capturing that water.
Yep.
But there's all of the other water between Erml and Kane that shoots straight that way, and if the gentleman that lives at the corner of Shumway and Erml, I can't remember his name, when he's irrigating, that ditch is already saturated. There's no, that water just totally overruns the road and has nowhere to go.
You bet. And just so you know, and everybody here that's listening or online today, those systems are designed to capture the water, and then we have to release it at historical flows. So we're not allowed, just, they go, why can't you just build a bigger outfall and just let it go crazy into Jimmy Camp, and we can't do that legally wise by law. So we'll look at everything, trying to do a new irrigation or a capture pond is going to be real difficult just because of the cost.
Understand, understand.
But let's see if we can get Ben out with you. Ben, actually, our city engineer's a stormwater expert.
Okay.
So he's been able to help other folks before, and let's get him out with you and see if we can help you.
Okay, I appreciate that.
You bet, I'll be right with you.
Okay, thank you for coming in.
Thank you, everybody.
And I've got your phone number and his address on here, so, okay, perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
I'd like to be in on the meeting with him and Ben, please.
Okay, thank you. All right, the next card I have is from Sean McNally from the VFW. Sean, if you could come down, state your name for the record, and push the middle button, please.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of City Council, my name is Sean McNally, I'm the Senior Vice Commander of Post 6461, thank you for having me this evening. First, I would like to extend our deepest appreciation gratitude to the City Council for their presence and showing up to our annual picnic on Saturday, the police and fire departments, we do appreciate your presence as well, thank you very much. I'm here on behalf of my commander, he is out of town on a family emergency right now, so he's unable to be here. The VFW National Convention has convened, and VFW 46461 in a second consecutive year has reached All-American and All-State Achievement, so that's a big achievement for us, and we do appreciate the community helping us with that. Being through the post and the commander, we would like to provide a detail or color guard to carry the national colors for the Fountain Parade coming up. Additionally, if there are any fees associated with VFW entering afloat for that parade, that would be, the information would be greatly appreciated. That is all I have for this evening, and thank you very much for having me.
Sean, hang on just a second.
Yes, ma'am.
The gentleman right over there, Mr. Blankenship, is not only our utilities director, he is currently on the chamber board, and the chamber does the parade, and so he can give you information. Go ahead and say it, because there might be other people wanting to be in the parade, right?
Actually, on the Fountain Valley Chamber of Commerce website, we have a page under events, that is the Fall Festival, and has all of the information that you need to register, and it has the various, I know that there's various fees, and there's, for certain organizations, there's no charge, but I can't cite those off the top of my head, but if you go to the website, you should be able to find everything you need there. If not, we have an office in the building right behind City Hall here that's open from nine to one every day.
Roger that, thank you very much, sir.
You're welcome.
And they can talk over there about if, doing the color guard at the parade, too?
Absolutely.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Sean. All right, that's all the cards I have for tonight, so that takes us onto presentations. Item 5.1, presentation by El Paso County Treasurer Chuck Burman on Property Tax Budget Billing Program. Thank you for coming down here tonight, appreciate it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, Scott, thank you for inviting me down, and it was nice catching up with my good friend Todd Evans. Over the years, our daughters have been competitors against each other from middle school to high school, and then also competitors together against in club sports, so it was great to catch up.
Thank you, Chuck, and go heels. Yes, there's a story to that.
Well, yeah, we like to razz each other and stuff, talk about our daughters' pursuits in academic sports. So I wanted to present to you a program that I think citizens in Fountain will find a great assistance to them. We have instituted a new property tax program. Can, who's controlling the slides here? Go ahead, next slide. So currently, property taxpayers have two options to pay their property taxes. They can do one large payment April 30th, or two half payments February 28th and June 15th. Property owners have often mentioned to us the struggles that they have in budgeting one or two large property tax payments. For many of our citizens, about 65% in El Paso County have a mortgage, so they have monthly payments they're making that wraps in their insurance and their property taxes. But once someone owns their property free and clear, then they have that situation of how do I manage that large payment once or twice a year? And they often mention that it'd be much easier if there was a way that we could break it down. So listening to our citizens, we've come up with some ideas. So I just did want to take a little time to mention some things that citizens can take advantage of, that is, in addition to this, that if they aren't, they should avail themselves to us. Senior Homestead Exemption Program, that takes tax dollars off the top of what you owe for property taxes. The regulations with respect to that is they have to live in their house for at least 10 years and be 65 years old. There is also the Disabled Veteran Exemption, which probably is very apropos for members of your community that they can take advantage of. And then there's a Property Tax Deferral Program. It's a program that, for folks that are house rich, they paid off their house but they have restricted budgets that maybe they can't afford, they can defer that, it's like a lien on their home, and that it can be then settled up later down the road when citizens' situations improve, or when they pass on, that can be something that's a part of the estate to be settled. Next slide. So the El Paso County Treasurer's Office is pleased to be able to offer to residential and business property owners the ability to prepay their property taxes in smaller amounts over a longer period of time. And this is in response to residential, commercial property owners' concerns regarding the increased burden of paying taxes. The vehicle is a full-service, secure, cloud-based portal program that's designed to enable residential customers and business property owners to split their property tax payments in easy-to-manage payments. They can go to our website, they can go to, you can Google "El Paso County Treasurer", make sure you put Colorado in there so you don't get El Paso, Texas, it's on our main page, the portal for that, or they can type in the simple words of escrotax.com, and it will take them to that, and they can pay through an ACH, their debit credit card, and then we're also offering a variety of digital wallet programs for folks. I tell people when I explain this, it's kind of like level billing, like utility companies have, where they look at your past usage, and then they calculate how much that would be on an average so that you don't have the high highs and the low lows. So this is the same sort of thing, where you prepay that, it goes into escrow, it's secure and protected, and then when the time comes that your property taxes are due, that is then transmitted to us. You get verification of that every month, that money is coming out of your account, so it keeps strict accounting by the penny to what you've already paid and what you owe yet, and then when it is paid to our office, you get notification that it's been completed, so you have the confidence that it was made on your behalf. So benefits to property owners, it gives them that peace of mind, so rather than laying awake late at night and 2:30 in the morning trying to think, how am I going to make that payment, it gives you the peace of mind that to manage big bills and de-stresses the situation for our citizens. It's easy to enroll, it's just a couple steps, and if you have concerns about signing up, you can call our office at 719-520-7900, we'll be happy to walk you through that, or you can have your favorite 12-year-old granddaughter help you through the process, too. It's very transparent, like I said, every step of the way, when the payments come out, it lets you know that it came out, where you are with respect to your total bill, so you're always in control. And if at some point a citizen says, you know, Chuck, I'm really not so keen on this, I don't want to do this program, you can opt out, and within 24 hours, you can get your money back for that. So you are always in control of this program every step of the way. It's secure and compliant by state and federal laws, then it has an accurate Then it has an accurate auto-balancing feature so you know when there's any changes that's been made to your, your tax bill. Next one. We can go ahead and skip that. I want to, for, to be respectful of your time. So when you go to our website and you click on the icon, you'll see this come up. And like the old adage, how do you eat an elephant? You know, one bite at a time. How do you manage a large property tax payment? One little nugget at a time. So you go to that page and then on the bottom, you'll see, you'll click Colorado, you'll click El Paso County, and then you can search by your property, by your, either your address, your name, or by your parcel number if you happen to know it. And then you click Find My Bill and it'll take and, and break down how much the payment would be each month. So this is for property owners that own their property free and clear and your tax account must be current in order to enroll. And like I said before, to take advantage of the service, you go to the County Treasurer's website, select the escrow tax portal link, and then you create your account. Go ahead, the next page. So what we use to calculate your payment is your past history of property taxes. Now periodically, the assessor reassesses that and sets that rate in December as to what you'll owe next year. So we'll first calculate your average, you know, your amount based on your previous average. And then if it goes up a little bit or down a little bit, we'll get that update from the assessor's office. You'll be informed of that and it can tweak your payment up or down based on that new assessment. And then prior to the last payment, June 15th, if your glide path has you giving us a few more dollars, you then, we true that up and then we refund that. Or if it's a little bit short, it trues up and takes a little bit more out. So, and like I said, if property owners have any questions, they can contact our office at 719-520-7900 and we'll walk them through the process. But I think it's a great service to help de-stress situations for our citizens and give people great relief when it comes to property taxes. We've been talking to a number of groups, if we can scroll to the end. Oh, the cost, what's the cost to participate? So the E-check is $1 per month. You can use your credit card. I don't encourage that. I'm fiscally conservative, so $1 a month, you know, look at it this way. If you had to drive to our office and make that monthly payment, you would pay way more than that in gas or postage now anymore is 78 cents. So the, just a little bit more of the cost of a stamp is what the cost is to be a member of the program. Go to the next page. We've been talking to our folks at the Department of Human Services and letting them know of this program to help assist folks. Have a meeting with Pikes Peak Council on Aging later on this month. Been in discussion with AARP. They're going to, in their next installment of their newsletter, they're going to have some information about the program because this is first in the nation to be doing something like this. We've been talking to AMAC about promoting this. I've been talking, I talked to the Fountain Valley Senior Center 10, about two weeks ago and I'm talking to other senior groups to get the word out and I just asked yours since this to spread the word out to your citizens. I gave each of you cards and I have cards on the back table for people to take on their way out. And with that, I'm happy to address any questions you may have.
Chuck, if someone gets one of the two, the veteran or the senior homestead exemption, that will automatically know that they entitled to that and take it?
That's correct.
Because that's attached to the property.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
Perfect. Okay. Any other questions from anybody? Well, congratulations on being first in the nation.
Yeah.
Always good and scary.
Yeah.
And, and thank you for coming down tonight to share with us.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity. Appreciate it.
Joanie, if there's any extras after tonight, maybe we can put them down in that little twirly thing downstairs or something? Okay. Thank you, Chuck.
And for Todd, go Penn State.
Notice he said that when you're safely seated behind the table, huh? Yes. All right. That takes us on to 5.2, Board Commission and Committee Appointments Tonight. There are none. Item 6, Correspondence Comments and Ex officio Reports. Anybody over at the table over there? Mr. Traynor?
I have nothing.
Anybody? Chief?
Yes, I wanted to address real quick, kind of some of the graffiti that we've seen around town. And I want to kind of address how we're going to kind of take care of it and try to prevent. So we have, right now, we've got kind of a work group, I'll call it, where I've got my community engagement detectives. It's the DICE unit, which is Direct Investigation Community Engagement. So they're going to be out identifying and photographing and then probably sending those pictures to our school resource officers in the schools because obviously, most of the graffiti is likely coming from juveniles. Whether they live in Fountain or not, I don't know. But our school resource officers are a great resource for identifying kids and they know all of the stuff about the kids because they work with them and are there every day. So that's kind of the initial stage. We'll work on the investigation, hopefully trying to identify where it's coming from. Once we do that, you know, we're going to loop in code enforcement to this because Tish and her crew are out there all the time. They know as much about this as the officers do. So we're going to loop in that component. And then, of course, the removal of the graffiti itself. Commander Racine has his contacts we've used in the past. We're going to reach out and try to get the stuff removed as fast as possible. And I know the Streets Department has some minimal ways they can get them off of our signs pretty quickly. And then private property or HOAs, block walls, things like that, that's going to take a little bit more work, but we're working on a way to, to get that done as well. So just wanted to kind of update everybody on that and we don't want that problem to get out of control.
I appreciate it because it seems like in the last week or two, we've really gotten a lot of tags around town.
Yeah.
Are we allowed to, because I noticed there's one on like one of the big telephone boxes?
I'm sorry, Mayor, I missed your question.
The big telephone boxes over by 7-Eleven? Are we allowed to scrub that off even though it's technically not our property?
Uh, yeah, I think we would just probably touch base with 7-Eleven and I'm sure they wouldn't have a problem with us taking care of that.
It's not 7-Eleven, it's on 85. It's one of the big telephone.
Yeah, I know what you're talking about. Yeah, we would figure that out and it would be removed.
Okay, yeah.
Correct. Yeah, and we'll loop in CDOT where they can help us with cost on some of this, too. And then just one more thing, Mayor, real quick. I know the Mesa Ridge Speed Zones have reduced down to 45 miles per hour. I think we're doing pretty good on enforcement and education and getting that whole thing flowing as best we can. I am aware of the 35 mile per hour school zone that we've gotten a lot of interesting feedback about. It's not, I wouldn't say negative feedback, but it's like, how is this speed school zone so long? Again, that's a CDOT road and a CDOT decision. We didn't have anything to do with that, the City of Fountain, to the best of my knowledge. So we will enforce that like any other school zone and people are just going to have to slow down. The reason it's so long is because Janitelle is right there and they take the proximity of Janitelle and the proximity of Mesa Ridge High School. And that's why that school zone is so long. So it is a very long school zone on a very fast road that we've dropped people down to 35 after being 55 just two weeks ago. So super big adjustment, but I think we'll be fine once we get the enforcement going and everybody's educated.
And District 3 worked with CDOT. They did a safety study for that entire stretch for both of those schools and this was one of the results that came out of that study. So they didn't just make that change willy-nilly, they really looked at it, paid for a study to be done and, and this was some of the safety results that came out of that.
Right. Small price to pay to, to keep the kids safe going to and from school. So we'll, we'll deal with the 35 zone. So if anybody has any questions or further questions, just feel free to call my office. We'll talk with them.
Yeah. I mean, I think people have wondered for a long time why it was so fast in front of the school zone in general. So it's nice, I know it's hard to make that adjustment, but I'm glad to see it slow down. Hopefully that'll help some of those rear-ending accidents there, too. So, all right, I'll start on my left tonight. Councilmember Rick?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to have a big shout out to Officer Malone and Officer Carpenter. Last week, I got a knock on my door and Officer Carpenter said, hey, we've got a three-year-old little child out here running around. He can't verbally tell us where he lives. We don't know what's going on. Can you help us? Unfortunately, I was able to point him in the right direction and they got this child back with its parents safely. Those are the little non-shoot-'em-up, you know, non-Starsky and Hutch-type stuff that our officers do that are extremely important for the community. And I just want to recognize those two officers. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Geek?
Christie, Todd and I met with some representatives from the Colorado Springs Small Business Group, which led to discussions about what's happening in Fountain, what happened in Colorado Springs. We found that things to be very much the same. And so to, to make it a short story, we're going to have a two-city partnership regarding small businesses and changes in procedures. So pretty exciting stuff.
Very good. Councilmember Hinton?
Yeah, so I got an opportunity to spend this weekend at the VFW picnic. I volunteered to be in their booth. If you, if you remember the last time, I kept my word and so spent a couple hours in their booth, their dunking booth, to get dunked by people and I think we raised a lot of money. I called out FD a little bit, so you guys had some crew there and they did a good job. They're pretty athletic, so it was good to be able to do that and to be able to see the community out and about. And I think the VFW, the meal was good, it was a good roast that pig that they had and everything was done well. And then I just want to talk about just, you know, we had our grand opening of King Supers. It seems to be going well. I go there frequently to shop and get gas and it seems like the feedback that I'm getting back from the community that they're appreciative of another grocery store in the area, to be able, just to have that and to be able to go there and facilitate. So I appreciate, thank the staff and Christie and everybody that was involved in that process. Please let them know, Todd, that they did a great job and everybody involved in that. So thank you.
Councilmember Duncan?
I was happy to see, I also attended the grand opening for our King Supers, but I was most excited to see that there is a Action Behavior Center, children with autism. And it's called ABA Therapy for Autism and it helps kids improve social interactions and learn new skills. So I was really happy to see that in our area here. We have a lot of kids that have autism diagnosis and I thought, you know, I sent that out to a couple of parents and they were very excited about that. So just want to put that out there. I also attended the budget meetings that were online from our Capitol and some things that are very scary to me and I don't know how that's going to affect us here in Fountain, especially with our employees, because they're saying that in 2026, that fewer people are going to have access to healthcare coverage and I don't know how that's going to affect things being passed down from loss of coverage, from hospitals that are demanding that the employees take, that the employees cover the cost of the premium increase. They say it's going to be an average percent of 28% increase into 2026 statewide. And I know right now, I went to the, the doctor and my copay went up 50%. So I don't know how that's going to affect any of our employees here in Fountain, but just want to put that out there that, you know, to watch your rates on your premiums coming up. I also attended the, the meeting that they had. They had the Budget Committee and they also had the Legislative Committee. And one of the things that I thought was interesting that is coming into law is that the nuclear is now officially a clean energy source here in Colorado. And that bill is House Bill 251040 and it adds nuclear to solar, wind, geothermal, small hydroelectricity and hydrogen to the state's list of clean energy source. So that means that nuclear is now a part of the mix as the state works towards its 2050 clean energy goal. It also opens the door for public funding of future nuclear programs and I just don't want them here near Fountain. Let's see, I think that's all I have. We still have free rides that are occurring with our transit service through the 31st, right, Todd? We still have that going on and so please take advantage of that. There is a bill also talking about, and I'll get that bill for you. It's House Bill 251290 and this bill, if you, you could be charged with a crime if you interfere with a transit worker on duty in the way of bus drivers, if you're purposely getting in the way of bus drivers, train operators, ticket inspectors or maintenance workers, it will be considered a criminal harassment. And this was already a crime within the Regional Transportation District, but the new law makes it a criminal offense across, across the entire state. So just a couple of things that have became law. I don't know if you've seen on school, on the TV where they've seen that school districts have, across the state have to develop student cell phone policies. I mean, we, we didn't have that when we were growing up, but we have to deal with that now. So the schools have to have a policy, a formal policy in place spelling out when and where students can use their phones. So just put that out there for the parents and that's all I have.
That bill was carried, written and carried by our own representative, Representative Bradfield. And it was proven how much better the kids do when the phones are put away. And they learn social skills because they talk to each other instead of their phone during the breaks, right? And one of the teachers made a comment that she was so excited to hear kids talking in the hallways again rather than this. You know, so something much needed that, yeah, you're right, we didn't have to deal with that when we were in school already. VFW picnic, as Brad said, was great. By the time I got out there, they were picking the bones on that poor pig. They were, there was hardly anything left. So that thing, that thing really went honey, tea and me. Brand-new business right across the street here had their ribbon cutting. And PPACG, last month, they brought forth their 10-year CDOT plan and the board voted nine to six to not accept it because we didn't think there was enough pre-planning for transportation infrastructure needs. And so CDOT did some fancy foot in the last month and some of the other groups had some special meetings. We'll be voting on it again tomorrow and if it passes, there will be some much-needed infrastructure planning stuff that is now in the 10-year plan as opposed to none that was on there in the, in the original plan. So kind of played with $88 million there and rolled the dice, but I knew they would come to the table and we would win. And, and I, hopefully it'll pass tomorrow and, and it'll be good. Okay, that takes us on to Item 7, Consent Agenda. All items listed under the Consent Agenda are considered routine and will be approved with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which case the item may be removed from the Consent Agenda and considered separately at the discretion of council. I would like to remove Item B, the resolution for the replacement of the Fountain. I just to have, make sure that everyone on, in the public understands that we're not picking a fountain tonight, that we're just going to, going to accept some money. And if Gordy can just give us a few minutes of his time on that. Is everybody okay with that?
Sure.
Okay. So with that, it would be Consent Agenda Item 7A. What would council like to do? Councilmember Hinton?
I'd like to move the, I'd like to move to approve the Consent Agenda for Item A only at this time.
Okay, Councilmember Rick?
Second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further deliberation? Seeing none, please vote.
Five, five yes. Motion carried.
Thank you. That takes us on to Item 8, Old Business. There is no old business. Item 9, New Business. 9A, Considerations of Items Removed From the Consent Agenda. And that's going to be Item B, Resolution 25-030, a resolution authorizing the City of Fountain to proceed with the replacement of the City Hall Fountain and to utilize FEMA grant funds for the reimbursement of eligible costs and amend the FY 2025 budget. Mr. McCormick?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. Chris, if you could, could you bring up that picture I dropped in the presentation? Once I get up, I'll give you a description of what it is. So what you're looking at here, or what's on the screen, is a picture of City Hall and it has a decorative fountain in front of it, replacing our old splash pad. And as you can see in the picture, we'll still keep our American and Colorado flags outside. And as you can see in the picture, we'll still keep our American and Colorado flags outside and just beautify that area that's currently unusable due to the floods from 2023. The fountain sustained substantial damage. So when we're going through the FEMA process, what we did was we looked at that fountain and replacing it. One thing FEMA couldn't do was replace it with another play fountain. There's no such thing as play fountains anymore. Everything's either an interactive fountain or a splash pad. And with that requires Health Department codes that we'd have to meet. And some of those codes would be expanding the filtration system we have in the old splash pad. So we would lose some of our city lawn to add some additional treatment sinks out there to treat the water, to give it a better recycle rate like we have at our current splash pad. Another thing is there's no, whenever the original fountain was built, there was no requirement for a bath house. Now there's a requirement for a bath house. So one of the things we would have to do to re-establish a splash pad or interactive fountain out there is to develop a bath house or a restroom area for people coming to visit it. We would have possibly the option of using City Hall, but then we would have that foot tracker from people using the fountain, running in and out of City Hall, creating a slip wrist inside of City Hall. With the FEMA grant, it's a little different than the CDOT grants and other grants I've brought you in the past. FEMA has awarded us a grant for $319,000 and with that comes a 12%, 12 and 1/2% match. The difference here is if the project is less than 85% of that estimate from FEMA, which is, I'll get you that number, $279,125. If it's less than that, then we don't have to pay any match costs. If it's significantly less, like our Trail Repair FEMA project was, any money that's left over out of that $279,000, the city keeps, gets to keep for future park flood damages. And as you can see from these last storms, it doesn't take much to cause flood damages in my department, especially on the trails and near Jimmy Camp. We spend a lot of time after all these little storms repairing those areas.
Mayor, can I say something?
Yes.
Just for clarification, the picture was for illustrative purposes. That's not what actually is being...
Correct.
The council isn't approving that. I want to make sure that's really clear for everybody. Really what the council's approving is us accepting the FEMA dollars because then Gordy will begin the process to get public feedback and council feedback on the actual look and design and whatever. But that's just to give you an idea of what it might look like.
Okay, is that it?
That's all I have, unless you have questions.
All right, well, I like that one, but I know. Anyway, yeah. All right, Councilmember Rick?
Just feedback. I think this is great. I think this is something we want to do. The only thing I would suggest, when you bid it out, that we have some sort of timer on the fountains so that, you know, we can shut it off certain times of the day depending upon what's going on so we're not using electricity 24/7.
Yes.
To run that. That's just feedback, that's not directive, but that would be something I would ask you to take a look at.
And you'll be coming back to us with the design, with a couple, three examples for citizens to look at and comment about, right?
Yeah, so the process is now is if council decides to move forward and accept this grant, knowing that we can only put a decorative fountain in here, I'll send it out to bid, hire a contractor, contractor will come with a designer and they'll come up with an initial design. At that point, I'll come back to council with the designer and the contractor and then we can make our minor tweaks and still stay within the original bid budget amount.
I completely understand what we have to do, but I used to love driving by and seeing the kids running around out there and playing in it. But I understand what we have to do and why and fiscal restraint and all that kind of stuff. Councilmember Duncan?
Thank you. I know this is not the design that we're looking at. I'm just concerned about, you know, this type of fence. And so, and then how do we keep people from use, you know, from take, we have to drain the water at some point and discourage people from throwing money in it and then going in there and getting it.
Yeah, that's just going to be a challenge with any fountain. But I know Fountain has been around for over 100 years now and the city's never had a fountain to represent Fountain. And I think now's a good opportunity for us to bring that to Fountain, especially with the rebuilding of Old Town and City Hall and all the festivals we have here. I just think it'll create a great beautification. But I can never guarantee you somebody won't take a bath in there. The old fountain, people from, used to dump their laundry soap in there and it would turn into a bunch of bubbles, so, I mean, we'll have challenges, but I think the risk, the reward of having the fountain outweighs the risk.
Yeah, I think it's awesome. I even like this design. I mean, I like when we have a theme, you know, especially when it's, you know, the colors for autism and then we light up the, we light City Hall. It would be pretty to have, I like it, I do. I just, I just don't want people using it to go in and make change, right?
Yeah, I understand.
So is there any questions from anyone in the audience about just accepting the grant tonight and beginning the process for replacing the fountain up front? Okay, seeing none, let's bring it back up to the dais. What would council like to do? Councilmember Geek?
I move to approve Resolution 25-030.
Okay, Councilmember Duncan?
I second.
Can we have a motion in a second? Any further deliberation? Seeing none, please vote.
Five yes, motion carried.
All right, thank you. Okay, that takes us on to Item 9B, Resolution 25-031, a resolution to authorize the city manager to execute the construction contract with Rockham Inc. for the Utilities Operations Center Access Road Reconstruction Project and appropriate funds to complete the project. Mr. Blankenship?
Thank you, Mayor. About four and a half years ago, the city's utility, electric and water operations, moved into a new facility on the southwest side of town. It was a former home of aggregate mining operation. And once the building was completed and we moved in, we maintained the existing access driveway or roadway. It was in fair condition at the time, but over the last five years, it's continued to deteriorate to the point where about half of it needs to be replaced. So we went out to competitive bids, we received three bids. The lowest responsible bid was submitted by a company by the name of Rockham in order to proceed with the project. It is not funded in the operations budget, but we do have money remaining in the 2019 bond proceeds. It was the 2019 bond that actually paid for the facility. And so, we need the council recommending that the council award the bid to Rockham, authorize the city manager to sign that contract and appropriate the money to complete the project and authorize us to spend that money for the construction. And that is my recommendation.
Okay, Mr. Rick?
So Dan, I want to be clear. We are not spending tax dollars to improve the road to the Utility Operations Center. Is that correct?
The source of the money is bond proceeds. When we sold bonds in order to build that facility and do other improvements and there's approximately $4 million still remaining in that bond fund that we will use to, for this project.
Okay, that's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Okay, any other questions? And we're not tearing it down to nothing because that would be 10 times the amount of money. You're just going to probably grill it down?
We are actually removing the existing pavement and it's about half the length of the driveway, but we're removing the existing pavement and then we're re-compacting and conditioning the subgrade and then placing a new four inches of asphalt on top of that.
Okay, all right. Any questions from anyone in the audience? Okay, well, there's a few heavy trucks on that road over the years.
There's been a lot, yes.
All right, we'll bring it back up to the dais. What would council like to do with this? Councilmember Hinton?
I make a motion to approve Resolution 25-031 and approve the city manager to approve that.
Okay, Councilmember Geek?
I second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further deliberation? Seeing none, please vote.
Five yes, motion carried.
Okay, Taylor, we've got the buzzer ready.
I'll do my best, you don't have to play me offstage.
It says 30 minutes in the agenda. Consideration of three resolutions related to regional water infrastructure, including project access agreements, participation in a new water authority and the city's withdrawal from an asset sale of Roy Haynes Creek Reservoir Project. Question for city clerk, do I need to read all three of these into the record right now or do we just wait until we choose one or?
I think you could read them into the record as you go on to vote them. So he could do his presentation and then you would read each item, do a vote, each item, do a vote.
Does that work for you too?
That works for me.
Okay, so the first one is Resolution 25-032, a resolution approving the Temporary Construction and Right-of-Entry License Agreement for the Arkansas Valley Conduit Frying Pan Arkansas Project across the jointly-owned Roy Haynes Creek Reservoir property.
All right, thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, members of council and the public. So I'm going to do something a little unusual tonight. So as the mayor referenced, we have three resolutions that we're going to be asking you to vote on. All of them are related to the same thing. It's what we call the Restoration of Yield or Roy Project. They're all very closely interrelated to each other. I think it's best to give you the full exposure, background and how these items relate before asking you to vote on any individual one. So if you're okay with it, I'm going to go through a full presentation. I will introduce each of the three votes as I arrive at them, but I will ask that we hold off on actually voting until the end. There is a lot to cover here. I'm going to move quickly, but I do welcome you to stop me if at any time you have any questions. So jumping right on in, I first just want to kind of lay the groundwork really quickly for what we're even talking about tonight. And really, everything we're discussing centers around something we call water exchanges. It's really a mechanism that we use in the water world and it really is just kind of an accounting trick that's done on paper to move water around. It's a way we can trade water upstream, move water from certain points on a creek to other areas without ever actually touching the water. There's no pumping or moving it involved. It's all accounting tricks that are done on paper. It's all managed by the state. You have to go to court and get an approved decree to exchange water in different places. There are conditions and criteria. The one really key point, though, I want you to take away is that when you make a water exchange, you're exchanging it from a point usually downstream to a point upstream. The consequence of that is that you're reducing the flow in the river between those two points. I want you to keep that in mind as I go on to the next few slides, is as you're exchanging water between points, you're reducing that flow. So really, the main question I want to answer is, why do we care? Why are water exchanges important to us in Fountain? Well, the simple answer is that 75% of our treated water is brought up through pipes that come from Pueblo Reservoir. We have to have water stored in our accounts in Pueblo to fill those pipes. And so, the goal of everything we do from a water management perspective with our water rights is we try to get every drop of water we can into Pueblo Reservoir. That's the bottom line. The problem we have, though, is that of all the vast water rights that we own, 95% of them accrue downstream of Pueblo Reservoir. They're either on Fountain Creek, which joins downstream of the dam, or some originate all the way in the lower Arkansas, which is very far downstream. The only way we can get that water up into this storage is either we install tons of pipes and pump stations and spend a ton of money or, as everyone does, we use these water exchanges and these similar administrative tools to swap that water around and get it where we want it to go. So keep that in mind as to why really we even care about exchanges. So I'm going to set the table here with just a little bit of history as to why we're even talking about Roy tonight. It all came about in the early 2000s. The city of Pueblo was interested in building a whitewater recreation park on the Arkansas River, right in the heart of town, right at downtown, where I-25 crosses in that vicinity. They wanted to build a nice amenity where people could come out, kayak, surf, do a bunch of recreation. But they started seeing an immediate problem. A lot of water users are operating all these exchanges. You've got Fountain Creek over on the east end of town where a lot of water rights are coming in. You've got Pueblo Reservoir on the west end of town. And like I just explained, when you do an exchange, you're drying up that stretch of creek and the whitewater park is right in that middle stretch where the water would be dried up if everybody kept exchanging willy-nilly. And so, they filed for a water right trying to basically force and somehow keep water in the creek to minimum levels. It's an unusual water right. Most water rights, trying to take water out of a creek and use it for something. This is kind of the opposite. This is trying to keep water in the creek for a purpose. It's done a lot for environmental purposes and they can also be done for recreational. To really cut a long story short, this kicked off a huge legal battle between all sorts of entities. It raised environmental concerns of low flows in the Arkansas River. It got a whole bunch of opposition from entities that operate these exchanges and it really just kicked up a huge legal battle and a bunch of problems spawned from it. And so, really, at the apex of that issue, some members, different governments that have a lot of water rights, all came together and decided, hey, there's got to be a better way than everybody just suing each other and fighting each other in court for decades or whatever it's going to come out to. So from that, we came out with an intergovernmental agreement in 2004. They created something called the Arkansas Flow Management Program. What this is really is it's a simple framework that everybody agreed that at certain times of the year, we would strive to keep a minimum level of flow in the Arkansas River through Pueblo. If at that time of year flows are below that, we are required to shut off our water exchanges to help boost flows through Pueblo in the Arkansas to meet those targets. So really, all this is to say that we now, after this IGA was signed, have these permanent restrictions on ourselves and these other municipal water users that when flows are low, we have to shut off our exchanges to accommodate flows through Pueblo. So now we'll get into Roy, because really the key question here is, what do we do about this? Pueblo really kind of got everything they wanted with this IGA. They now had certainty in the flows for their whitewater park. Other groups got what they wanted, minimum flows for things like the environmental concerns and fish hatchery. But us, the water users, all we really took was a restriction on ourselves. So the one remedy that this IGA allowed was something that was called Restoration of Yield. That's Roy. That's kind of the magic term and acronym that we're going to use a lot. Really, at a simple level, this is the legal right to build storage downstream of Pueblo so that when our water is flowing down the creek and we're told you can't exchange that water, we have somewhere to temporarily park it, hold on to it, wait out that window when we can't exchange it and then trade it up at a later date. That's all this really is. It's just a temporary stopover for that water until conditions change and we can get the water up. So didn't really act on it too much for a while after that IGA. Around 2015, 2016, the water users who were part of that original IGA got together and said, hey, let's start looking at this seriously. Let's start pursuing something. So we made a second IGA with six parties involved. This one really kind of formalized what we call the Roy Group, this partnership of these six water users. And it really started laying out the framework for how we're going to explore and pursue projects. It established participation percentages that each partner was going to take on as we did this work. You can see there are three kind of large partners, Colorado Springs, Aurora and Pueblo. Pueblo Board of Water Works, just to be clear, it's a separate entity from the city. And then we had three smaller partners, which includes Fountain, Pueblo West Metro District and the Southeastern Water District. So after that IGA, we spent a few years, we looked at various sites, kind of figured out where we wanted this storage and what we wanted it to look like. Ultimately, we arrived at a property we liked, about 20 miles east of Pueblo, near Boone, Colorado, off Highway 96. We call it the Haynes Creek Property. It has a small little watershed called Haynes Creek running through it. And so in 2021, the six partners got together. We all purchased that property, about 200 acres, I believe, for just shy of $3 million. So I'm going to take a second and pause right here and take a small detour now to introduce the first item we're talking about before we get into anything more complicated. So we now own a piece of a property about 50 miles away, way out east of Pueblo. We're a minority owner. We only have 4.76% stake in this property, but we are still an owner nonetheless. So to kind of pivot here... So to kind of pivot here, the U.S. government is currently in the process of building a major pipeline project that extends from Pueblo all the way out east to Lamar. This is a clean water pipeline project. It is really meant to satisfy some water contamination concerns for a lot of these rural communities out in the lower Arkansas Valley. They have a lot of radionuclides and other water contaminants that are in their water. Makes it really hard to treat, makes it just really bad water for the folks to drink. This has been a long-contemplated project, all the way back to the 60s when the whole reservoir was approved. And so we're very excited. This project is finally happening. It's a huge benefit to the region. It has broad regional support. The one problem we have, though, is that their planned route needs to cross our new property. So we have worked with the feds for the last year and a half or so. We have reviewed their plans, and we've agreed that, hey, we're okay with you crossing the property. The one challenge, though, is that we have six property owners, each of them a different government entity. And so the approval process can be quite cumbersome. The feds are looking to build this pipe as soon as possible. They're really kind of waiting on us. So the first vote tonight is requesting your approval of a temporary license and construction agreement. This would give them a temporary five-year agreement to construct their Arkansas Valley conduit pipe across this Haines Creek property. All six boards are going to be voting on this agreement. Once they've got it built, we will deal with a permanent easement after the fact. We are really just trying to get out of their way and clear the path as quick as possible. And again, we've all reviewed their plans, so we feel confident it's not going to impede the ability to build a future reservoir here. Any questions on that before I move on and bring us back to the main topic?
Councilmember Duncan.
I'm not sure how to ask this question, but when you went to the slide that has the cost sharing, and do we have, like, it says Fountain has 4.76%. Do we have water there already, or?
There are no water rights tied to this property.
Okay.
This is just a share of the land that we own. All of us would band together to build a reservoir and then use our other water rights to fill that reservoir. So there are no water rights involved with this specific deal.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Hinton.
So there's six people, six entities that have to vote on this. I'm assuming majority rules as far as...
We're hoping for a consensus. All of the entities are supportive and agreeable. Nobody's expressed any issues. It's just really a process we have to go through to legally sign an easement document. If it was your property, you'd be the one signing, but if you've got six other people on the title, everybody's got to kind of sign off.
So it has to go through their city council as well?
Absolutely.
Well, that's an uphill battle.
I'm glad you said that, because I'm about to jump into that.
Okay.
Right now.
I'll let you get to that.
All right.
Anybody else? Any questions from anyone in the audience so far in what is explained? Okay, keep going.
All right, thank you. So let's go back to this ROY Group now. As it was just expressed, it's really kind of a pain to do this six ways. We've got to go for any minor property change, any management work. We have to go to six boards, six councils, there are six teams of attorneys. It's just really cumbersome and really painful. And then you start contemplating the fact that we're looking to build some joint assets to manage this property, to potentially hire staff. It's just going to be a mess for us. It's going to be very slow and very inefficient. So realizing that a few years ago after we bought the property, the group got together and we started thinking, well, how can we streamline this? How can we properly manage this? And that's where we came up with the idea of creating what is called a water authority. This is a separate...
Let me go ahead and read in the resolution for this part of the presentation, even though we're not voting on it, just so we're keeping. So this part is about Resolution 25-033, "A resolution authorizing and approving the establishing agreement for restoration of yield water authority and committing the city of Fountain acting by and through its electric, water, and wastewater utility enterprise as a member of the authority." That's going to be this.
Yep, thank you. So a water authority is a standalone government entity that is comprised of other governments. We are members of this authority, basically. It is authorized and allowed by state statute. We, in fact, are part of two other authorities that I'm aware of, through the utility, the Fountain Valley Authority, and the Pikes Peak Regional Water Authority. So there is precedent already for us working through an authority. We also contemplated making a ditch company or something similar. The problem we found is that it doesn't really preserve our governmental rights and protections. So we felt that an authority was the proper vehicle to do this, to protect us as government entities. So looking at what an authority would shape out to be, it would be governed by a six-person board. Each of the member entities would have one director position on that board. We would adopt our own budget as the authority. And really, the unique thing we're doing is we are creating two, what we've called, cost centers with this authority. There's the first kind of broad umbrella cost center. That is just the administrative body of the authority. It's going to hire the day-to-day staff that keep things going, that keep all of the filings needed in line. It will commission studies and reports for future projects that we may look at. But that's really the extent of what this administrative body is going to do. Once the ROY Group has selected a project and members have decided whether or not they're going to participate in it, we'll create a subgroup in this authority. That group will be responsible for the project. They will work out the allocation, who's going to pay what for the project, and all the costs associated with that project are going to go to the subgroup. So there's really a two-tiered system. There's the broad umbrella, which is just the administrative, running day-to-day and looking at projects. And then once we pull the trigger on a project, that's where everybody shifts into a smaller group and really where the big money starts coming in to fund and pay for projects. So I want to clarify that very quickly. And then stress that, once we pick a project, it's optional to participate. You can remain just in the administrative group, waiting for the right project, or you can opt into any project you want to when that project comes up. And then the last final thing for this is that this authority will not levy taxes or have property assessments. It will be paid entirely by assessing the member entities that make it up. It's the very same concept to how we pay for the Fountain Valley Authority. It's part of our line item budget every year as the water utility. We pay into it. And same thing with how the Pikes Peak Regional Water Authority is done. These are not government entities made to tax people or to assess properties. It's going to be paid by the entities that will benefit from it. And so now that brings us to vote number two that the mayor read out. This would be requesting that council approve and execute the establishing agreement for the Restoration of Yield Water Authority. This would give our consent to create this authority. Fountain would be one of the six members of the authority acting by and through our utility enterprise. We would deed over the property, our share of the property and any other joint assets, to the authority. We would get a corresponding stake in that project group. For example, the Haines Creek Reservoir, which we already have a share of. So I'd like to pause there and ask for any questions before I continue moving on.
Okay, the board is composed of one director appointed by each member.
Yes, ma'am.
So the city of Fountain would, say, appoint you?
Yes, ma'am.
For example, okay. And then are the votes equal?
So it depends what we're voting on. For what we'll call procedural matters, it is a simple majority vote, one member, one vote. For changes to bylaws and other significant project decisions, it is a weighted vote based on that percentage breakdown. But really, we feel comfortable because those with most skin in the game are the ones who are going to really have a desire to change it. And nobody can compel another entity to join in a project if they don't want to. So that was something we felt comfortable agreeing through our attorneys on.
Oh, I'm not saying...
There's a very clear split in which of the votes are weighted and which of the votes are proportionate.
There's a reason I'm asking that, right? Okay. Councilmember Rick.
So the director from Fountain, would that be somebody that, for example, a council member? Or would that be somebody on the electric and water staff?
Right now, it's contemplated it would be staff level for all of the representatives since they have familiarity with the ROY matters and the technical expertise. That is something that could be chosen at the discretion of council. Fountain can nominate its own member. As it's currently contemplated, all of the entities have nominated informally a member of staff as their board member.
That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Right. Okay. Councilmember Duncan.
Okay, so it says, when it goes, when it, in the description about the board members, and there's no compensation for someone being on the board. So I'm just trying to make sure that that means that this person, if it's a employee, that the employee will be working on Fountain's time.
Absolutely, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
They can't double-dip and get paid by the district and the city.
Sorry, ma'am.
We'd be paying our own bill at that point anyways, just by being a member of the authority.
Right, right, okay. Well, to me, this would be something where it definitely would be a staff level because there's so much expertise needed to be on this board and understand. And if you have people rotating in every couple of years, it can very quickly get unbalanced, you know.
And we've found that model to be very effective in the Fountain Valley Authority, which does similar things and manages complex assets and things. It's very helpful having the actual utility staff there at the table.
Right. I just, I always question when there's weighted votes, especially when it's one of our neighbors to the south, because things tend to go their way a little bit more frequently. And you are comfortable we have guardrails?
Yes, ma'am. That was a matter of discussion. As we were forming this, it took a very long time and a lot of attorneys back and forth to craft a document all six parties were comfortable with. But that was one of the specific matters that we did discuss in length, is how the voting would work. And so it was clearly delineated which items would be allowed as a simple majority line vote, and then what matters they felt needed to be a weighted vote so that a smaller member couldn't somehow compel a bigger member to do something that was going to be exorbitant and vice versa. We feel comfortable with how those guardrails were put in place.
Okay. Is there any questions from any in the audience on this section of it? Nope, okay, go ahead with the next part.
All right.
Do you want me to read the next part in first?
Um, sure.
Resolution number 25-035, wrong one. "Resolution 25-034, A resolution directing staff to take necessary steps to remove the city of Fountain from the Roy-Haines Creek Reservoir Project and authorizing the city manager to sell Fountain's share of the project assets."
Thank you. So I've just explained that we want to join this ROY Authority. Now I'm going to kind of pull the rug out from under you and take us a different direction. So we've talked about the one project that we already have identified through this ROY Authority. That is what we are calling the Haines Creek Reservoir. This is the one out near Boone. We already own 4.76% of this property. So just to give you some high-level figures of what this looks like, preliminary design that was done in 2019 when we picked the site has this sized at about a 4,000, 4,000 and change acre-foot reservoir. To give you a bit of a frame of reference, Pueblo Reservoir, when it's full, is about 350,000 acre-feet. So this is not a massive reservoir. This thing is not large. It's not going to hold a ton of water. It's really just going to be a blip on the radar as you're driving down the Arkansas River. So our 4.76% would net us about 200 acre-feet of space, as it's currently contemplated. And it would just pull water off the Arkansas River from an existing canal that a lot of us have shares in already. So back in 2019, when this was taken to a preliminary design level, the construction cost of this reservoir was about $53 million. I think you all know how construction costs have changed over the last six years. We expect that that's well north of that number by now. But at that 2019 level, Fountain's share with our 4.76% would have been in the ballpark of $2.5 million. And then, just to be clear, there is no firm date for finishing design and construction of the reservoir yet. All of our focus has been on getting an authority established. Now that the authority is starting to take shape, we expect that moving on with Haines Creek and advancing it to construction is going to be the primary focus. So let's talk about Fountain's place in all of this, kind of where we sit with Haines Creek. So first and foremost, we have had the ability to use storage, just like this would provide, all the way back since we signed that 2004 IGA that limited our exchanges. We, the members of that IGA, leased space in a body called Lake Meredith, a little further downstream on the Arkansas, for this exact purpose. We filed an exchange to allow us to trade that water up to Pueblo. Since 2004, when that was able, Fountain has never once used that water, used that space, I should say. We have never temporarily stored our water when we're curtailed from exchanging. We've never had a need to exchange it, and that is because of point number two right here. What we do with our water, instead of operating our own exchanges and working within the framework of this agreement, of the flow management agreement, we have deals with a group called AGRA. That's the Arkansas Groundwater Recharge Association. It is effectively an agricultural co-op. They own numerous water rights. They lease numerous water rights. And they offer a service to a vast majority of the farmers and irrigators down in the lower Arkansas. Those folks, they're interested in farming. They're not water rights experts. So what they do is simply, they pay this group every year. This group does all of the water accounting for them. This group does all of the filing for them. They just collect a fee for the water rights they use and the services. But this makes it a very simple, convenient way for those farmers to manage their water on their farms. And it's a nice way for Fountain because they have a wide variety and range of water users. And they need water at different times of year and different amounts. There's always a need. So regardless of the time of the year, when we have water flowing down the river, they have a need for it. They will take our water as it's going down the river. They will give us back 70% in Pueblo, which is cut for transit losses, evaporation, creek losses, and then a small cut, really a convenience fee, we call it, to not have to deal with the headache of these exchanges. And they are not limited by the limits we are, because they're not part of these IGAs. So it really is a really convenient tool for both Fountain and AGRA. It supports the agricultural community, which we like. It gives them more water in their portfolio to help manage the deliveries to their clients and their users. And it's really just a simple, passive way for Fountain to trade all of our water up. In addition to that, just with our strain on resources right now, we need to consider all of our options. As you know, we are currently studying and designing the Fountain Reservoir Project as a potential means for treated water in the future. I noted before that the ROY reservoir, we'd have about 200 acre-feet in that. The current preliminary design for our reservoir is 10 to 15 times that, about 2,000 to 3,000 acre-feet. It would be located here in town. It would have the added benefit of letting us treat the water on-site. It would fill a large chunk of the storage gap that our master plan has identified we will have someday as the city grows. And really, it's keeping the water close to home, but still giving us the flexibility to manage our water. If we know that we're not going to be able to exchange it, rather than sending it down and waving goodbye to it as it's floating away, we can capture it up here beforehand, because we know when these exchange limits come. They're usually telegraphed a few days out, saying, hey, this weekend, we're going to have to shut off exchanges because the flows are down. So we have flexibility in management. And then last and most simply, you're all very well aware and versed of the water fund's finances right now. As I expressed, in the $2019 amounts, we're looking at north of $2.5 million. I can't even guess what that would look like today when this thing moves to construction. We need to really be critical and scrutinize every expense we're planning. And for the reasons that I noted above, really, staff isn't sold on this project. We don't think it's a critical or important need that should be diverting that many resources to it. And so we'll vote in just a second. I have one more slide for you, just a few other small considerations before we get to a vote. And I'm coming right up on that 30 minutes, so I'm going to go quick. So I already talked about the storage. We have storage gap in the future that we will need to cover. ROY, this is really temporary storage. It's a small holding bay until we can trade the water. It's not a good permanent storage bucket that helps us fill that gap. We've been very vocal and transparent with the other members that Fountain isn't sold on this project. All the way back to 2020, we were looking at it. We still rode along with it to see where it was going, but it was known early on, we may not want to be in this. And so with that in mind, we were careful when creating the authority agreement to create an off-ramp. It has a very clear, detailed process in how a member can get out of this project, how they can recoup the costs they have sunk into it, and how they can just be a member of the ROY admin, that umbrella authority, without being in the Haines Creek project specifically. That was done on Fountain's behalf, so we have a clear off-ramp. And then lastly, one kind of counterpoint to all this, this 2004 IGA that we were in, that created all of it, that is a permanent IGA. We cannot opt out of it. We cannot back out of it in perpetuity forever. If we start operating our water exchanges, we will be limited on those exchanges by the terms of this agreement, whether or not we participate in projects. And so on that front, we really feel that it's prudent and practical for Fountain to be part of ROY. We don't want to walk out of the ROY Group in its entirety. We feel that someday down the road, our needs may change, conditions may be different. We may say, hey, it makes sense for us to be in a reservoir down here now. Right now, we don't feel that's the case. That's why we are advocating to get out of... Right now, we don't feel that's the case, that's why we are advocating to get out of this specific project, but that is also why we are recommending that we still remain in this authority and have a seat at the table as future projects develop where it might make more sense for Fountain. So with that, I'll bring us to the third and final vote we're asking for tonight, if my clicker decides to work. Thank you. And that is a resolution asking you to direct staff to pursue Fountain's exit from this project and authorizing the sale of our share in the Haynes Creek Reservoir Project. We expect to recoup at least our purchase price, that is the 4.76% of that 2.8 million dollars that we paid in 2021. We'd get a small, little extra for some post-purchase costs that we've paid our share of. That would end Fountain's involvement in the Haynes Creek Project. And then, as you vote, I do wanna note, there are really three options on the table. There's a vote yes, to follow that direction, there is a vote no, if you want to keep Fountain in this project going forward. You do have a third option on the table that we would just like to spell out for you. If you don't want us to be in this project, but you're not comfortable authorizing us to make the sale, you could give us a simple verbal direction to proceed that way, and ask us to bring any sale back to you when we're ready to sign on the dotted line. It is staff's recommendation that you authorize the sale as well, so that we can proceed and negotiate with confidence with the other members, knowing that we are getting out, but I do just want to be clear and upfront with those options. You've heard enough from me, so I will open it up to questions, and I will back it up to the first vote when you're ready.
Okay, I just wanna ask some procedural questions of Mr. Trainer Er. Um, we have three resolutions, and they're, um, really kind of a pack, all being recommended? They're all being recommended by staff to pass?
Correct, right.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
That's right.
And, 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 uh, if we pass the first one, and the second one, and not the third one, that would be the option?
Yes, that's right.
Okay, but if we pass all three, we're authorizing us to get out of this, and we're essentially gonna get any money back that we've put into this project?
That's right, correct.
Okay, that's just a lot of information in 30 minutes, and I'm just trying to...
I appreciate your patience.
Okay, 'cause they're independent, but yet they're inter, they're interconnected, so... Okay, before we do that, does anybody have any other questions about the materials we were presented? Councilmember Duncan?
So, just being the alternate on the watershed district, um, I see, when we go back to the board, we're missing, um, from Pueblo, and that's been consecutive, is that someone from that area is always, um, not present? Do we have some type of, um, like I said, guardrail to say that if, um, someone is not at the table, then what do we do?
As far as managing the authority?
You mean attendance, attendance at the meetings? Is that what you're...
Well, they don't have, I don't see anybody listed on their board. It was on one of these, where it had all the board members present and the alternates.
We, we have, uh, identified alternates from each entity, in case the voted member is not present. Uh, I think it should be at the very back of that agreement. There is a primary and an alternate identified in the event that someone can't make it, so that they can still have a seat at the table.
Is that what you're...
Okay, no, I see this on 20, I didn't see this one, but there's a chart, and it was, and, and it was missing someone on the chart.
Pueblo West wasn't in this at the beginning, right?
Correct, they, they joined in 2011.
Yeah, maybe that was it earlier. I was cracking up, looking at some of the names that were on that original document, Larry Patterson...
It's been around for a while.
And, and Jerry Forte, I think?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right, any questions?
Well, that clears you up. If, if 23 and 24 identifies the board members, but there's a chart in here where, um, Pueblo is missing someone, and I don't know, so maybe we need to...
And if, if they haven't designated anybody, that's something they can do as we're forming the authority. Each of the governing bodies has the right to name their representative, so even if it's not on the documents, Pueblo, if they have some, if they don't have somebody listed there, they can nominate or put someone forward on their behalf.
Okay, here it is, it's, uh, exhibit B. There's no page number on here. It's before you get to new business of nine C3. What I'm seeing is, is that it seems to be, uh, a pattern for Pueblo, and I'm not sure, but usually, some on this side of the town, uh, of the agreement, that we always are missing someone to represent. And I want to know if that's gonna be, if that's gonna be consistent, that there's no directors, is that gonna pose a problem when it comes to making decisions?
I believe there's some language in there about having a quorum to make decisions, so if certain folks aren't there, I could see a problem if multiple entities are missing, but I don't believe that would be the case. Each of them has a concerted interest in this 30, each of them has some skin in the game, so to speak. I don't think members will make a habit out of not being there, and if so, we know where each of us is. We, we're all very well-connected, it's a very tight group of these Roy entities, we would be able to reach out and get someone response.
Okay.
On page nine of that section, it says the quorum is two-thirds of the directors in office.
Two-thirds, thank you.
And, uh, directors then in office. So if they don't have somebody in office, then they don't count as part of the quorum, I would assume.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, any questions from anyone in the audience? Please come down and state your name for the record and ask your question. Oh, over here, please. We wouldn't want you not to be on camera, so... We wouldn't want you not to be on camera, so come on down. Center button.
Uh, Frank Carrick. You know, I don't even know where to begin, but I do remember when we talked about this about four years ago. So, um, the 135,000 is...
Yes ma'am.
Was that the figure? So that would come back to the city?
Yes ma'am.
And that could go into, which would be just a raindrop, into the construction costs for the, um, retainer that Fountain is going to build. Is that correct?
It would really be absorbed back into the water fund, and then, from there, we don't have any direction on how we would use that, or if it would just help to shore up the utilities finances, as we're currently focusing on.
Well, Fountain never has any money. We, we all, we all know that, we never have any money. So, um, how much have we put into this project?
135,000, and then some small change on our share of the studies that helped identify...
And that's what we would be getting back?
Yes ma'am.
And that would go towards this...
I, I can't say with certainty how that money would be used, but it would help, it would go back into the water utility fund, since it was utility money that went out.
Mm-hmm, okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does anyone else in the audience that has a question? Come on down and state your name for the record, please.
Steve Arcey. So is, and forgive me, I just started looking at this as soon as it was published. Is there a, is there a requirement? 'Cause everything's before the council tonight, is there, is there a, a limit on time, et cetera, that this needs to be passed? These resolutions need to be passed tonight?
Uh, the first two are fairly time-sensitive. The easement in particular is really being pressed by the federal government, we are one of the last few. Four of the other boards have approved that agreement for the authority already, so we are one of the last two that had it in the works. We received notice recently that they're trying to get this across the finish line and have everything lined up by the end of the year. That's why it seems like it may have come out of the blue, but we are trying to keep the, the, uh, the ball rolling for the group.
So, by time-sensitive rush on it, you're talking, you have to have it tonight?
We do not necessarily have to have it tonight, no.
So, my only concern is that, I don't, and you know how I like doing research, but based with what was available for me to download and go through, and just listening to some of the comments, it sounds like there's more documents that would have been available. I'm not sure I could actually ask reasonably intelligent questions about some of the, some of the concerns and nuances on it, and I don't know how much time that you've been presented with all of this, in addition to all of this that, that there might still be. Could you also turn around, and this is a question for the council, could you also turn around and say, okay, let's not vote on this tonight, let's vote on it in two weeks of the next council meeting? And give everybody an opportunity to look at all of the information and, and be able to come up with reasonably intelligent questions? I mean, that was a lot for what was going on tonight, a lot of what I've looked at over the weekend, and I, honestly, I, I mean, if you were just to ask me right now, I'd be like, hey, go for it, 'cause I don't think I have enough information to, to reasonably ask any concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Arcey. This is not the first time many of us up here have seen that, so, um, this information. Mr. Hinton?
No, I was just about to add on to, to Mr. Arcey, like, we, we've been reading about this for quite some time, and Tyler and the utility staff have done a great job keeping us informed all the way up to this point. We knew this was coming, uh, we just obviously could not make a vote a, as a, as a council body. We knew of the processes and everything of it, and they gave us a potential, uh, background of this for quite some time. This has been in the works for not just today, months, but for years, and so we, we've been working at this pretty long.
And I, I appreciate you sharing that with me, so that I know you, y'alls have, y'alls have, um, have been able to, to look into the nuances a little bit more. I just don't, honestly, I don't feel based upon that, that I could actually ask you reasonable questions. So this is a, this, from my point of perspective, would be, uh, this would just be a leap of faith. Go.
No, I, I get it, it takes a PhD plus-plus to, to understand what's going on as far when it comes to this kinda stuff, so, and it takes a lot of research and a lot of time, and like, really, the, the smart brains, our staff really have the confidence to be able to, just to give us a little bit of that education, to, and I can, I can understand just being out in the audience, just trying to take 30 minutes of it and trying to come up with a, a question to ask, it could be difficult.
Yeah, it's, it's very complicated, and, um, and they've been talking to us about it a lot, and I think one of the biggest concerns that I know several of us have been expressing for at least a year up here, I'm sorry, you haven't been here the whole year, but a, a year is, what is the cost coming? How are we gonna afford that? Uh, what are we keep getting ourselves into? Do we need to use the off-ramp now? Because, uh, we've been very, very concerned about overextending ourselves and not being able to do the projects that we need to do in town. And then, the more the studies came out of the, I don't wanna say 200 acre feet is a little bit of water, but it's, it's not the, what we need for the town to grow and if we can do our own projects. So, there's been a lot of conversations, and, and, um, I know way more about this than I probably ever wanted to know in my life, and I feel perfectly comfortable voting on it tonight on the amount of information that I've gathered, but I do appreciate your questions, and I always appreciate the time people take to do their own research on it. Uh, councilmember Rick?
Yes. I hear what you're saying, but when I'm looking at this from a citizen's standpoint, in the past, the appearance is previous councils and previous utility directors kind of did a shotgun approach. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go for anything and everything I can get to get water rights, to get access, to do, to, to prepare for the future. Now we're at, quote, "the future," and it's like, we've gotta start making selective decisions as to what in that shotgun blast do we wanna keep, and what do we wanna get rid of? When I look at this, I'm looking at, here's something all the way out and boom, how am I getting that water up here, the fountain, to use? The cost to me, the, the, the juice doesn't equal the squeeze, you know? I'm not gonna be able to spend enough money to get something out of that that I can use. So, without going into all the details, that's how I'm looking at it, of this, this ain't helping me right now, this ain't, this isn't where I wanna put my focus on to fix our water situation. So I hope that helps you, uh, understand where I'm coming from.
Mrs. Carrick, did you have something else? And please wait and come to the microphone, please.
Yeah.
Could you turn the mic on, please? Thank you.
A previous mayor said, well, we want to keep, we want to diversify as we would our financial portfolios, so that's something else to add to the mix. I, however, agree with you, because I am not nearly as well-versed in this as Dan is. And so I guess I'm asking him, as the brains behind all of this, is, what is your suggestion? What, what do you think?
Absolutely, I, I stand with what Taylor presented. I mean, everything that he talked about, uh, tonight i- is something that we have been talking about almost continuously, um, probably since, uh, the night that the vote was taken to purchase the property. And, and so, uh, yeah, Taylor did an outstanding job. He's, he's done all the late work on this. I mean, he is the true expert here, but he's working under my direction, and there's nothing that he hasn't stated tonight that, that I wouldn't agree 110% with.
So your suggestion would be to get out of it?
To, 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 yes, to, to sell our interest in Haynes Creek, but to stay in the Roy Group, because it keeps, that does keep our options open. And that's not an alternate, or alternative that we had four years ago. As Taylor explained, is before, uh, it was just the Haynes Creek project, that was the whole Roy Group. But as we started to move forward, we started to see some value in maybe being part of a, a, a bigger group, that we could then select projects. As the group developed projects, we're, we're not obligated to go with any of them, but we're, being part of the group opens up the opportunity, if, if there is one that is beneficial for our rate pairs, then we can choose to do that at that time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Each council does the best with the information they have in front of them on that night. And like, like Dan just said, we didn't have that opportunity four years ago to have this option that we have, we have tonight, but I think we've always kinda kept it in the back of our minds. And just like we all do, we diversify our portfolio, but when Sutton's not working out, you move on to the next thing, right? And when you have more information. So, um, sure wish my husband had listened to that when I told him to invest in Taco Bell and not Del Taco, you know? What can I say? You know, you move on and you with the more information, right? All righty, is everybody ready to vote? Okay, councilmember?
I just wanted to clarify that I've read the information thoroughly, we've, we've been through the, you know, the questions about the directors is not, um, something that's going to stop this program from going through the resolutions. I spent time with, uh, Taylor and Dan, and they went through, I mean, when I went there, e- everything was spread out, and they explained that Taylor went through, he, you know, like I said before, he, he simplifies things to let you, you know, so that you are able to follow along, and he did a really good job at it, so I appreciate that. Um, the only thing that I was not clear on was the water rights, and they answered that, and we don't have any water rights with that, but other than that, I, I'm very confident in the information that we've got.
Councilmember Hinton?
I just wanna add, Fountain does have money, and we, and we spend it, and we spend it accordingly and correctly to, for our citizens, I just wanna add that, you know? I wanna make sure I get that out.
You beat me. You beat me to it. All righty, is everybody ready up here? Okay, so we have three things. Number one, resolution 25 dash zero three, zero three two, a resolution approving the temporary construction and right-of-entry license agreement for the Arkansas Valley Conduit frying pan Arkansas project across the jointly-owned Roy Haynes Creek reservation property. What would council like to do with that one? Councilmember Geek? Your light was on. Oh, I'm sorry, okay. All righty, uh, councilmember Rick?
Move to approve resolution 25 dash zero three two.
Councilmember Duncan?
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further deliberation? Seeing none, please vote.
Five yes, motion carried.
Thank you. Number two, resolution 25 dash zero three three, a resolution authorizing and approving the establishment and agreement for the restoration of Yield Water Authority and committing the city of Fountain acting by and through its electric water and wastewater utility easement as a member of the authority. Councilmember Hinton?
I make a motion to approve resolution 25 dash zero three three.
Councilmember Rick?
Second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further deliberation? Seeing none, please vote.
I'm missing one vote. There we go, five yes, motion carried.
Okay, thank you very much. Resolution 25 dash zero three four, a resolution directing staff to take necessary steps to Okay, thank you very much. Resolution 25-034, a resolution directing staff to take necessary steps to remove the City of Fountain from the Roy Haynes Creek Reservoir Project and authorizing the city manager to sell Fountain's share of the project assets. What would council like to do? Councilmember Hinton?
I make a motion to approve Resolution 25-034.
Councilmember Geek?
I second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further deliberation? Seeing none, please vote. Need a reset? Okay. Am I reading too fast?
Five yes. Motion carried.
All right, thank you very much. Councilmember Rick, I'm going to take a short break. Could you please start Item D?
Sure.
Thank you.
Calling for first reading of Ordinance 1813, ordinance submitting a charter amendment to the electors of the City of Fountain at the coordinated election to be held on November 4th, 2025 relating to simplification and clarification of the charter pertaining to publishing or publication of notices, ordinances, or other documents of the city. Ms. Carniel?
Thank you. Before you tonight is this ordinance, we had Fountain Valley News up until 2023, and it was our official city publication print that we had used. And we also known as El Paso County advertiser. When they printed their final edition, the city transitioned to publishing in the Gazette. While the Gazette's printed, is a printed publication with circulation in our area, its primary audience is the broader Colorado Springs region. This change has shifted much of our outreach to readers outside of the Fountain Valley community. The proposed amendment would update the charter language to allow official city publications to be distributed through digital or physical print that is circulated within the city. So, it enable more cost-effective publication methods. The cost savings would be approximately $3,000 annually. It will allow digital distribution to reach more of our residents and maintain compliance with publication requirements. The intent is to use the avenues currently available as the city website or social media, things that are already available and ways that are being used currently. And then, it's always available in paper form to be reviewed through the city clerk's office. So, the request tonight by the council is this charter amendment to, is being proposed to the electors at the November 4th, 2025 ballot to simplify the charter language allowing for publishing or publication of notices in any of, of media, be it digital, physical, generally circulated, or otherwise available within the city. So, previously, when we were using Fountain Valley, Fountain Valley News, we published a lot of things in the newspapers, such as our vacancies for employment, boards and commissions. We also published city events, such as the tree lighting and the movie nights, important, important information, such as the cemetery cleanup, or the, when we did the city cleanup events. And then, we also published our codes and our statute requirements, such as our ordinances, planning items, annexations, liquor hearings, those sorts of things. So, in comparison, year to year, once the Fountain Valley News left, we had a large cost savings, only because when we went to the Gazette, we simplified that down, only doing code and statute requirements. So, this item going to be placed on the ballot would allow us to publish those items also, that aren't required by statute to be published in the newspaper, to be published electronically through domains that we're currently using to get all of that information that we no longer put in the Gazette out to our citizens.
So, I think you said, we've spent about $8,000 in the last three years?
Correct.
Publicizing in the Gazette?
Correct.
Or every three years?
Every three years, yeah. About $3,000 annually.
Okay, all right. And really have a wider circulation?
Correct. And be seen by broader audience, as we know.
And, and these technologies, no idea, right? When, when the charter was made?
It's a new thing.
These things didn't exist. And, and we did have a paper in town, so we could keep publishing that way.
Exactly.
Any questions from anybody up here?
Just a question for Ms. Carniel. This charter amendment isn't going to change what's required to be published. It's just going to change where we're allowed to publish it at. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, that's all I have, Madam Mayor.
No, it's a good clarification. Thank you. Yes. Any other questions up here? Any other questions in the audience? Come on down. State your name.
Darrell Couch. I guess my question is primarily, I know that there's been some deviation, like when they wanted to do the golf course, and they published stuff in Facebook or something. Is this going to require that it be posted on a place that's readily read by people and not just ad hoc of where it can be posted?
Yes, they would be posted in the same location each time. And well, we're talking about having a specific page for publications on our website.
Okay.
Okay, good question. Thank you. And the nice thing is, it'll be easily shareable if it's out there on social media.
Correct.
So, okay. Any other questions? All right. Seeing none, I'll bring it back up here to the dais. What would council like to do with the first reading of ordinance number 1813? Councilmember Geek?
I move to approve ordinance 1813 on the first reading.
Councilmember Duncan?
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further deliberation? Seeing none, please vote.
Five yes. Motion carried.
Okay, thank you. Item E, Resolution number 25-035, acceptance of an EPA Brownfield Cleanup Grant Cooperation Agreement in the amount of 1, 1,924,580 with regard to the city-owned Lorraine facility.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll be doing the presentation for this. What you have before you is a resolution that is going to, this is like, one of those good news stories, where we don't get to do a lot, where we're accepting almost $2 million in grant funds to clean up a facility. As many of the council know, that the Lorraine School has been around for countless years. I think it's actually been built in five different phases over the years. But there is a significant amount of asbestos-containing material in there. And so, the EPA, we've applied for a grant, and the EPA has authorized us up to 1.9 million, a little over 1.9 million, to go in there and remove the asbestos-containing material through this grant. So, we'll go through the grant, hire a qualified cleanup contractor, and begin that process so we can clean out the building. This does not demolish that building when we're ready. In fact, this actually, we'll be taking a lot of steps that will allow us to remove that facility at some point, but we need to get rid of the asbestos-containing material. And if we can do it on the EPA's dime, all the better for us. Any questions?
Okay. Any questions from anybody? Any questions in the audience? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back up here. What would council like to do with Resolution number 25-035? Mr. Hinton?
I make a motion to approve Resolution number 25-035.
Councilmember Duncan?
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further deliberation? Seeing none, please vote.
Five yes. Motion carried.
Okay, that takes us on to Item F, request to reclassify an existing position and create a director of communications. Mr. Traynor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of the city council, as you are aware, part of your strategic plan has been a much increased focus on communications with our community. That's one area that we really feel like we're pretty weak in. Overall, all that we've improved over the years, we really look at, there just needing to be an opportunity to really focus more on communicating in general with our partners, with our community internally, et cetera, et cetera. And so, one, from time to time, positions open up, and it sort of creates an opportunity to evaluate that position and just, and talk about whether it makes sense to try something new. So, as the council is aware, the city manager's, the city's executive assistant position was recently vacated, and that caused an opportunity to evaluate the position and to decide, is there, is there something else we could do besides that position? And although that position does a lot in evaluating that, the discussion was, can we shift some of those duties around, some of them to me directly? Although, to be honest, with a lot of the, the day-to-day, I don't know, administrative types of things that you might deal with, with the city manager, I'd take care of my, on my, on my own. I mean, I set my own meetings, write my own letters, those kind of things, obviously. But in looking at that, the, the question was, well, look, is there an opportunity here to eliminate that position and really reclassify it and bring in someone who is a educated, someone who eats, drinks, breathes, sleeps, they have experience with all levels of communication? Someone who really is sort of that subject matter expert who can, we could rely on to give us advice on, hey, we really need to communicate this better with our community. How's the best way to do that? Or what's the best way to do that? We, we have a desire to, to even, gosh, even this last agenda item that Joanie was talking about, in, in the way that we communicate, even our agendas and those kind of things. How can we do a better job reaching our people where they are? You know, not just the same old way that we've been doing it. And so, although, again, we've been improving over the years, we've also been limited recently in some of those tools that we have. For example, the council's aware, and we've talked about it here, with the limitations on the website now, and, and the way we, the things we can and cannot communicate through the website. And so, it's just creating this greater need for an emphasis to hire someone who is strictly a communications expert. Someone that we can look at as that subject matter expert. So, my request to the city council is to reclassify that position and create a director of communications. And, and to, to maybe give an example of the type of position we'd be talking about, would be, you can look to either the school districts, D8 or D3, and they have just excellent examples of communications directors who are just exceptional. And they understand, they, again, they were trained in it. That's what their professions are. They've got years of experience. And again, they eat, drink, breathe, sleep. I mean, they just think about that stuff all day long, every day. And I think our community is the kind of community that needs something like that to really help us do a better job. So, that's the request.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilmember Rick?
Mr. Traynor?
Yes, sir.
Obviously, there's a pay difference between a admin assistant and a communications director. How much are we, how much are you thinking this is going to add or cost us?
Thank you. And remember, it's an executive assistant, which is more than a typical admin assistant. There's a, when you take it the fully burdened cost, not just the salary, but including the insurance and everything, worst case, taxes, the worst case would be a net of an increase of approximately 33,000. That's in the agenda reports.
Okay. And you, you know, what happens a year from now, and you go, man, I made a mistake. I shouldn't have gotten rid of that position. What are we looking at doing?
Well, that, I, in order to do that, I would have to come back to the city council and say, man, I made a mistake. I need this position. End up, be up to you guys to decide, look, is that important or not? I can tell you that we have game-planned a way to handle that. And the way we would do it is, we would take the front desk position in the upstairs area, and we would really change some of the duties there. Some of the duties that it currently has, that can be handled in other admin areas, would be shipped to those admin areas, opening up room. For example, that, that position handled, a lot of the duties it deals with are event duties. Well, communications event, communications people also deal with events. And so, some of those duties would go to the communications person. Some of the other duties for the admin, the admin duties would be farmed up, off to other admin areas, where we're currently taking on the role now to help with. So, we would have to shift that. And I think, I think as we've looked at it, I've had that conversation with the outgoing executive assistant, as well as the front desk person now, to talk with them about, is that something, I mean, you, both of them knowing what happens, you know, at the, at the, in the trenches level, is this something that's actually doable? Because I don't want to be coming back, and I'm not going to come back to the city council a year from now and say, oh, man, I really want that position back. Because that starts feeling a little bit like a bait and switch, and that doesn't feel good to anybody. And so, I wouldn't be coming back. But they both indicate that in looking at it and taking a look at the way we talked about shifting the duties, that that's completely doable and a reasonable way to handle it. Does that help answer the question?
Yes. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. One, one of the things that was the key thing is in our, and I appreciate Mr. Trilch building this position up. You know, there was nothing here when you came, so thank you very much. This is taking it to the next level, really, with it, with you moving on to a different responsibility. And, but, this is, this is one of the key things in our strategic plan, was really working on overall communication throughout the whole city and how we get our message across to our citizens. And I, I think this will make a, seems like this will make a big difference in that with a more of a coordinated plan, rather than everybody kind of doing their own stuff.
Well, I'm glad you actually brought up, Mr. Trilch. One of the challenges there has been all the hats that we've had him wearing since day one. And so, with our now greater, which includes strategic planning, the military relationships, all that kind of stuff, and, and communications. And so, one of the things that, that we've done, and we talked about this at the last council meeting, the council approved us moving forward, is with the expansion of our intergovernmental support agreements with the military and the revenues that's bringing into the city, we want to expand that further. This allows John to move and to focus into that role, and to just blow that thing up as big as we can potentially get it, because those are free dollars for our citizens. And so, that allows us to do that focus, have someone who can focus on that, and then have, bring someone in who can just focus on communications. Not wearing 20 different hats, just communications.
Okay. Any questions or comments from anybody? Any questions or comments from anyone in the audience? Please come down.
Since we're talking about a substantial salary, I'd like to know what the metrics are that, that council is set to say, we think this has been a successful endeavor in hiring somebody to do this position of communications director. It's not a willy-nilly, you know, gee, that was a great idea. It didn't work out so well. What are the metrics that are going to be in place to say, yeah, this, we can have, we can say that we've definitely gotten our money's worth out of this, or cut it off at the knees and forget about it?
Mr. Traynor?
Well, and for clarification, let me ask a question. Do you mean like, like down the road after we have this position for a year to say? I mean, I think that's a great, I think that's a great question. I think the big metric would be, we talked about this earlier tonight, the potential to have a tool that allows us to ask our citizens. Do you feel better? Because really, at the end of the day, it's about making sure our citizens feel better informed. And so, I think the big question, and we don't ask it now, but do you feel better informed today than you did yesterday? Or, you know, last year? I think that would be a huge question to ask.
That's what I'm saying. What is the metric? What is the definition of success, whether we succeeded or not, and whether, or whether we're just wasting money?
I think it would have to be, I think it would have to be satisfaction. Citizen satisfaction, council satisfaction. I mean, and I really, if we're, if a big goal is to inform the citizens more, it would be citizen satisfaction. That's probably your best metric.
Yeah, so, that, that kind of leads into a good point, Scott, and leads into just a comment that I have. Not all communication is accurate. This is to my neighbors to the north. They like to have a lot of beat writers write a lot of things about our meetings, and it's an accurate. It's not, that's not the truth. So, if we had a communication director, that communication directly comes from the city. And if anybody has any questions or any issues, they could come to the communication director, or come to one of us and ask us to make sure that the story that they're hearing or reading about is accurate. So, I, I actually like it.
Councilmember Rick?
Scott, I would, going to Mr. Couch's point, I think we need to do a study now, and then in a year, do another study, so that we've got a baseline to compare. Did we improve? If we just do one in a year, well, what do we got to compare that to? You know? So, I, I would encourage you to consider a survey now, before we hire somebody, and then a year after, so we have a baseline to compare it to. That, just, just my thoughts.
Councilmember Geek?
I think that this position would help us with transparency. So, I think it's worth pursuing. We've talked about transparency and everything, open and the public.
Can you put your mic down a little bit more? I'm not sure they can hear you. And you've got to really lean in.
Making sure the public is aware of what's going on, and I think that person would fill that need.
I agree. I agree with you, and I agree with Councilmember Hinton. We have a lot of keyboard warriors out there who like to make up what they think the facts are. And I think a lot of times, we don't sell ourselves really well in terms of what's going on in our town. And I think this could help, I think this could help with that, too. And Councilmember Duncan?
So, we have the tool, the Jimmy camp that's in place. So, can you explain where that would go? And, and where, where are we going to go with that? And my second question is- that would go and where are we going to go with that? And my second question is, is not a question, but we have people not sharing our information, but copying the information from the city's page or Facebook and not seeing what the source is. You understand what I mean by that? Like, they will say that, let's say that there is a notice about the meeting, but they don't say copied from or shared from the city's page. It seems as if it's original from them and not the city.
Yeah, I, you know, there's really, you know, in the world that we're in today, there's not a lot that we're going to be able to do with what citizens, about what citizens copy and paste and that and post. I mean, I wish there was, but there just isn't. Relative to Jimmy's camp, that's actually been, that's a really supported part of our website. People really enjoy that. So we would plan on continuing with that and just trying to look for more stories to put in that. I mean, in fact, our plan would be to continue on with every tool that we're currently using. It's just to expand and see what can we do to, you know, from from someone who actually, this is what they do, you know, give us better ideas than what we're doing today.
Okay. All right. Anybody in the audience, please come down and state your name for the record, please?
I understand.
Wait, could you push the button, please?
I'm so sorry.
There you go.
I understand what what you're trying to achieve. We don't have a newspaper here anymore, so social media is it, or your website. And if you don't go to the website, you don't, you don't know what's going on. The other thing, when you have one hire, it has been my experience that it leads to another hire. Mr. Trilch may find that he needs an assistant because he has all these millions of dollars coming into the city now, which is wonderful. But he may need an assistant. And then we have this director of communications, and he may need an assistant. So it's, that is a possibility. And those are things that we need to think about, that council would need to think about also.
So relative to Mr. Trilch, the ICSA program is completely self-supporting, and he cannot hire, we, council has made it very clear, that any assistants he has to hire are paid for only by proceeds from the ICSA program. And so if if he does hire more people, it's because the program is growing and building and able to support itself. And and those employees know that that if the ICSA program goes away, their jobs will go away, too. So it has to be self-supporting. And and I think we made that pretty clear. And that's why Mr. Trilch had to work really, really hard for a long time because it took it, we were for at least a year at that tipping point where he needed someone, but we couldn't, the program couldn't quite support it. And and that's the person he's got now is completely supported by by the ICSA program.
And Fran, I want to address that second question, because I think that's a realistic concern to have, right, for a new position. What I can tell you is we've actually retracted more of our admins here. And we've required, for example, our city attorney position, they they do all their own admin work. It's going to be really hard for me to feel warm and fuzzy about, I know, he doesn't like it. But, you know, it's just something you have to do. I mean, if it's a choice between someone who can help me write a letter or make a phone call, I'm probably going to do that myself and because I can do that. I mean, it's going to be hard for me to justify adding an admin for someone when I just got rid of my own. You know what I mean? To to provide a communications position.
I know, I know. I was an.
But it's a realistic concern. I get, I get what you're saying. Yeah.
Yeah. I was an executive admin for a lot, from, that was my background. And I don't know how some of you guys, well, I think it's wonderful if you can. I think it's great. You don't have anyone, Todd?
And what'll happen is they'll have one for a whole big group.
Yeah, yeah, that's true. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And I think the great thing about it is that he has the cake keepers that will can, he has to come to the council and the mayor to be able to ask for those additional things. And so it's not just him or the individual director asking, I mean, they can ask all day long, but it still has to get approved.
Yep. Okay, any other questions? Please come down and state your name for the record.
Javinya Downs. And I just really want to make a comment because I think that it's important that you do hire this because times are changing, and we need to reach people that we're not reaching currently. That's all.
Yeah, we don't know what technology is coming out next year or the year after. And we need to, we need to be, have somebody who's on top of those and isn't sitting back going, AI, oh, my gosh, you know, right?
And I wish I was an expert at communications. There's parts of it I feel really comfortable in. But when I look at, again, at those people that this is what they do, man, they they know 10 times as much as as we know. And we need that kind of help. We got to do better.
Okay, bring it back up into the dais. What would council like to do with this? Are we needing to vote on this or just give you a head nod? Or what do you need officially here?
I would, I would, sorry, I had to put that on. I would prefer it, just so that there's a proposed motion on there for you, to move to authorize a reclassification.
Okay.
Because I'm, literally, I'm not, I don't want to have that position and another position. I need to eliminate.
No, that's fine. Okay, thank you. All right. So we have a request from our city manager to request to reclassify an existing position and create a director of communications. Anybody listening? You might want to look for a job posting. No, it's communication. Okay, I'm sorry. Been a long meeting. Okay, all righty. What would council like to do? Councilmember Duncan?
I move to approve.
Councilmember Hinton?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Five yes. Motion carry.
All right, that takes us on to city council agenda requests. Anybody have any tonight? Nope. Okay. Madam Clerk, announcement of an executive session?
Yes, and I just need to let the council know that I will be removing the approval of the minutes from tonight's meeting. Those aren't completed from the last, last, so. In accordance with the city charter and the Colorado Open Meetings Act, the city council open session is to determine whether it will hold a closed executive session. A closed executive session may be held upon an affirmative vote of two-thirds of the quorum present. If consent to the closed executive session is not given, the items may be discussed in open session or withdrawn from consideration. Purpose of tonight's executive session is pursuant to CRS Section 24-6-4024E for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and/or instructing negotiators pursuant to CRS Section 24-64024B for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions on potential conflicts of interest relating to the purchase of water rights. Madam Mayor?
Okay, that's the request from our city clerk. What would council like to do besides go home? You can't do that yet. Okay. Councilmember Rick?
Move to go into executive session.
Councilmember Duncan?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Hold, please. One second. Sorry. Five yes. Motion carry.
All right, this meeting is adjourned, and we will be back at 8:00.